Call the City Council Meeting to Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Germaine.
Here.
Lamoore.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Mike Goangeli.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of the city and all who visit.
Thank you. And I see that this evening Saint Michael Boy Scouts Troop 547 is here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Seth to come forward and call his troop to order.
Troop, attention.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While everybody sits, I'd ask Seth to please stay at the podium so he can kind of tell us why or who's going to speak. Oh, somebody else is going to speak. Whoever come up and kind of speak to the importance of why Troop 547 is here this evening and why here before council and for the residents. Mr. Rowan.
Saint Michael Scout Troop, I think now is 63 years old. We've had 48 Eagle Scouts. We've got a couple more coming along. So we've been a pretty continuous factor in the area. I've done a lot of community service all over the city. Several new boys coming along. We've got a couple of future Eagle Scouts. And I'd like to thank the city for allowing us this opportunity to say the pledge. Thank you.
So I understand there are attendance here this evening. It meets some requirements and some obligations to move forward within their scouting career.
Yes, it's part of the citizenship merit badge that they have to attend a city or a community council meeting. And so that's getting a couple of issues settled for that.
So I look at scouts. I know that some of the council members have familiarity, have seen them in the past. I have as well, whether it be at Eagle Scout Court of Honor that they've attended for other scouts. I hope that all of you are able to achieve your Eagle Scout. If by starting today, along with all the other activities you've done, gets you there to earn those merit badges. And then, of course, then the service project, which is wonderful. So I look forward to seeing all of you in the future, as does the council, and appreciate the work that you do. I know one of the favorite activities they like to do in the community is the river cleanup. And I know council as well has been a participant. So we look forward to that coming up here next year yet again. So thank you for being here. It's wonderful to see you.
Councilman Mike Goangeli, his son Jason is one of our Eagle Scouts. Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago. And you were talking, as the scouts were here, about some of the same activities and different camps and camps they've gone to. So it's always wonderful to see. And I know that we see you in the community. So thank you for your volunteerism and participation in the city of Monroe. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item are any amendments to the agenda.
Looking at council administration, any adjustments or amendments? Seeing none. Next item, please.
Citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
Thank you. Are there any citizens or residents or citizens here this evening who wish to have comment not related to an agenda item? Any comments from those present here this evening? Seeing none. Next item, please.
The next item is a proclamation.
So we have a proclamation because this is United Way Month. I'd ask that I'm going to come down to the podium and speak to the council and those that are watching. And I'd ask that Director Connie Carroll and Mike Smith join me at the podium, please. We'll be here together. So it's always an honor and privilege to be able, as mayor on behalf of the city council, to partner with United Way and provide them the opportunity for us to recognize through a proclamation the great work they do and recognition as they start their campaign theme this year, which is Live United. And I think of the city and the participation from employees, as well as council and others, and not just your volunteer or not just your giving that might be and supporting certain funds and certain activities, but also through the volunteerism that we have. So it's always a pleasure that United Way is here. And, you know, they've been here since 1926 assisting local residents. The annual campaign begins at this point, and they start to really get out to the community and as they always have been throughout the year. But they generate and allocate funds to about 25 local nonprofit agencies throughout the communities. And of course, United Way here in Monroe is also now Lenaway as well, and broadening that scope of the hard work that they do and the support they need from all of us, but also from the residents. You know, they do have a want to create a long-term social change to produce healthy, educated, and financially stable individuals. And I think that's a foundation of all the great work they do. You know, the co-chairs, again this year, are Paul and Tammy Van Aken, but also there's co-chairs, also the vice chairs, Carrie and Chip Williams. So members of our community, as well as business owners and others nearby. And also the Billy Margreaves is for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, locally, AFL-CIO is also one of the chairs there. So I'm not going to read the entire proclamation. I wanted to give some insight what that is. We can listen to Connie and Mike tell us all the great work they're doing as well. But the proclamation is from city council, and it does proclaim the month of October 2019 as United Way Month in Monroe. So we're very pleased and honored to be able to partner with them and provide them this today. Connie?
Thank you, sir.
Mike?
Thank you.
Please make some comments.
You want to go first?
I'll take this. Make sure it gets the clerk.
Thank you very much for this honor. Just a little update. As always, United Way of Monroe-Lenaway County services, although we service both counties, we make sure that money is separate. The donors in Monroe County, their money goes to Monroe. But as we've grown and expanded, we've also expanded our services along with the agencies and the programs we serve. Mike has developed an excellent ramp program. We have secured grants. And he can talk a little bit about that if he wishes, but he's just done a phenomenal job with the ramp program, seeing to it that our citizens who are homebound have access to get in and out of their homes. We have expanded our services in the way of the Substance Abuse Coalition. We once again are the fiduciary for another grant for Monroe County to work with prevention and education through our youth. So along with servicing many programs that need your money and our support, we're also doing other things in the community because it's our role to help promote health, education, and financial stability for all. And thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you.
Connie pretty much said all of it really quickly. I'd just like to add that, you know, I'm we're proud of what the things that the United Way does in this community and in Lenaway, making sure that if we're not a funder, that our feet are under just about every table that we can possibly get them under to bring the voice of the community to some of those agencies so they understand the boots on the ground and what's going on, so that they can develop programs to better support their communities. Connie mentioned Project Ramp. Yes, Project Ramp is having a banner year. We're at a record-setting pace, hitting about 30 ramps thus far. We look to hope to have about 40 ramps done across Monroe and Lenaway County, taking that over at the end of June. So lots of things that we're doing. Very proud of the work that four employees are doing across two counties. There's a lot of real estate in Lenaway, as is in Monroe, but we spend a lot of time back and forth and in meetings and doing different things. So very excited about what we're doing. So thank you for your support throughout the years and future things that we can partner on. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Connie, just last comment. Of course, they hand me these nice pledge cards, which I know we get distributed to the council members, but it's really through their collaboration and coordination that they provide the great services in our community. And with these pledge cards, I do have to make comment about our city employees, who are very active, very involved, and are partners along with the United Way. Not only is they deliver their services as employees, but also as residents and community members and generous in partnering with them. So I want to give all of our city employees recognition for the support they give to the United Way. So that's it. And thank you very much.
Your honor.
All right.
Thank you. Your honor, may I say something?
Yes, please do.
Most of you are aware that I'm associated with Paula's House. And the United Way, we provide certain services that without the United Way, we couldn't have done that. We have women with children. And because of the funding that we get, we've been able to put a program together, we call it Celebrating Families, and help the mothers and children reunite and learn each other because that's not the way it is when they first come to us. So we're very grateful and proud to be a United Way agency. And Mike also provided a bus shelter, which, you know, before that, we had children standing out waiting in the weather to catch their school bus. And so, you know, it's United Way is an agency that we should all support. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman. You know, I'd make a follow-up comment because as you go to the United Way's website, there's many opportunities. And you can give in a general sense, or you can give in a specific sense as well. And I think there's many items on the list that talk about the opportunities of where you, as a contributor, might find the best services you'd like to see some assistance to. So please take the opportunity to do that. And Clerk Treasurer Lavoy was given the information. We'll make sure that that gets disseminated through the clerk's office. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item would be communication. Item 2567, the Sawyer Homestead Annual Financial Statement.
Stu, if there's a follow-up, we did get the material.
Nothing follow-up, Your Honor, other than they've provided their annual financial report that covers the recent fiscal year closing June 30th, their current year budget, as well as a prior year actual. So.
Very good.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we accept the Sawyer Homestead Annual Financial Statement for the year ending June 30th, 2019.
Second. It's a motion by Councilman Mike Goangeli, supported by Councilwoman Lamoore, that a communication of the Sawyer Homestead Annual Financial Statement be accepted and placed on file. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mike Goangeli.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item under council action is item 2555, Notice of Intent to Establish Telegraph Road Corridor Improvement Authority.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, and Mr. Cochran's up.
Mr. Cochran, discuss the resolution we're asking you to consider tonight.
Thank you.
I'm Mayor, Councilman Mark Cochran, Assistant to the City Manager and Economic Development Coordinator. As you're well aware, over the past year and a half, we've spent significant time working with our partners at SEMCOG, as well as the Monroe County Business Development Corporation and our neighboring jurisdictions of Frenchtown and Monroe Township, to develop a plan to improve the Telegraph Road Corridor. And I'm gonna I've got a handout. The first one is just a reminder that as a result of the plan, there were several recommendations for implementation that were provided with the study. Again, I think this is one example of us making a very conscious effort of not letting the plans and the studies that we do sit on a shelf and collect dust, but actually implement the recommendations, bring to fruition some of the plans that were evolved on the plan. And so, one of the first ones that we've always talked about throughout this process is to establish a corridor improvement authority. This is allowed under PA 57 of 2018, where the state granted the authority for us to establish corridor improvement authorities. And so the purpose of these are to revitalize and rehabilitate and grow economic development and commercial corridors throughout the state of Michigan. So part of the process includes the action that's before you tonight, and that is putting a public notice out, Notice of Intent to Establish not only the Corridor Improvement Authority, but to define the development area that we would be looking to have the Corridor Improvement Authority have jurisdiction over. And so tonight, we'll set the public hearing for November 4th. The reason we have to wait is because we're required to give more than 20 days' notice to all the property owners. And so the clerk will mail out a letter to all of the property owners within the proposed development district and all the taxing jurisdictions. And then we also have to post the public hearing notice in 20 locations within the corridor. And so later this week, we'll be going out and posting the public notices throughout the Telegraph, the proposed development area. And so while this has been a process that we've worked with Monroe Township and Frenchtown Township with, we've looked at the authority that's granted under the state statute to do a joint corridor improvement authority. Unfortunately, the legislation only allows for communities who sit within a county that has a population between 335,000 and 415,000, that also has two or more public state universities within the county. So obviously, that's written for a few locations throughout the state, and so we're not allowed to do that. But what we can do and what we should do is encourage the Monroe Township and Frenchtown Township to establish their own corridor improvement authority. And then we can enter into a local intergovernmental agreement for them to allow one of the authorities to implement and manage all of the authorities under one charter, so to speak. So the next map that I have that I'll hand out is the proposed So the development area that we've set forth for consideration includes 83 parcels on the east and the west side of North Telegraph Road, from Greenfield Avenue to the north by the former Lazy Boy Headquarters site, to the city limits of West 7th Street to the south. The requirements are that it has to be a commercial corridor, has to be located within an arterial collector highway by the Federal Highways Administration, contain 10 contiguous parcels, more than half of the existing ground for square footage, has to be classified commercial. You'll see in the map, not only does it show the parcels, but the building footprints as well. And we've worked with Terry Davis to look at the classification. I'll say I think it's more than 95% of the property in the development area are considered commercial. They have to have been designated commercial, industrial, or residential for the previous 30 years and served by municipal sewer water. So one of the things that the city has to agree to do by establishing the development area is to create a plan to expedite local permitting inspection process in the development area and to modify the master plan to provide for walkable, non-motorized connections within the corridor. And so we'll look at the master plan. I believe we're already in accordance with those requirements, but also looking at the process to expedite approval process as well. So the next step after tonight is to have the public hearing, and then the state statute requires us to wait another 60 days before we can establish the development area, which will put us into January. One of the things that we were hoping to do is to have this established by the end of the year so that we can establish the base tax during this tax year, 2019. We looked at the state statute. By the time the state certifies the tax rolls, it'll be May. And so capitalizing on some of the development that we're looking at with the Lazy Boy site, as well as what's happening with the credit union site, we'll be hopefully to able to capture the TIF income and start having revenue come in for the Corridor Improvement Authority within one year. So once the authority is established, city council, the mayor will appoint, with council's approval, the commission or the Corridor Improvement Authority members, one has at least one has to be a resident within the development area or within a half mile. And then no less than half of the authority members have to have a business interest within the development area. So that's something we'll be looking forward to. And then my thought and my idea in talking with the city manager is that their first order of business will to be to develop a development plan on what we'll do within the Telegraph Road Corridor, as well as a TIF plan that will ultimately have to come before council for approval. But again, I passed out the recommendations from the study. My thought is that the Corridor Improvement Authority should take ownership of those, and that should give them a good work plan for at least the first year or so, as we look to get the authority up and off the ground. So it's kind of a very broad overview of where we're heading and what the recommendation is.
Very good. Questions? I think there's a couple.
Andrew, you have a question.
Councilman Felder?
Yes. How will the finances operate between the it's not a joint authority, but between the separate authorities? And then just as a note for the affected properties in this region, I just want to confirm that this isn't going to increase, but just redirect their tax revenue.
Yeah. So each authority will have jurisdiction over the funds that they collect. But everything is being done in the spirit of intent, if there is an interlocal agreement, for the plan that was agreed upon by each of the three jurisdictions. And you're right, this is not an increase in tax. Just like the downtown development authority, the revenue will come off of the increased tax value created by economic growth within the corridor.
Excellent. Councilman Mike Goangeli, a question?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. My only suggestion on the map is that we my suggestion is that you take the district, at least down the side streets that would connect with Bentley. And the only reason why I'm saying that is because some of those side streets don't have sidewalks that connect with Telegraph. And that way, if they're in the CIA, the CIA funds can be used to put sidewalks and to connect the neighborhoods with the commercial district. So it's just a we're not talking about the properties themselves. We're just talking about the right-of-ways. So if it's the right-of-ways are included, then you can spend the we can spend the funds on some of those those type of improvements.
Good thought and suggestion, because obviously, one of the thoughts and the plans behind the Corridor Improvement Plan was to expand connectivity and access to Telegraph Road with the surrounding neighborhoods.
And my last question, Your Honor, is if we had conversations with the county?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Favorable?
So far, yeah.
Okay.
So this evening, you're looking for the council to adopt the resolution and then set the public hearing. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'll move that we adopt the resolution to establish the Telegraph Road Corridor Improvement Authority and set Monday, November 1st, or November 4th, 2019, at 7:30 PM as the public hearing.
Motion by Councilman Mike Goangeli, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on item 2555, the Notice of Intent to Establish the Telegraph Road Corridor Improvement Authority and Set the Public Hearing as Stated. Any final comments? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the Consent Agenda. And for item B, Approval of Payments to Vendors should read $1,287,192.04. 1287-192.04.
Before I ask if there's any items you pulled from the agenda, I know that Troop 547 does have some time obligations. Hopefully, they can stay for the remainder. We have the Consent Agenda that's up now, and we'll see if there's items pulled, and then we'll go from there. But obviously, we don't want to restrict them from their departure if they need to be. And I know they're watching their time. With that, is there any items on the Consent Agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the Consent Agenda? Councilman Mike Goangeli.
2550.
Other items from the council? Seeing none. Is there any items on the Consent Agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion?
Any items from those present here this evening?
Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Your honor.
Councilman Lamoore.
Make a motion that all items, with the exception of item number 2550, be approved. The motion's carried out and recorded by the clerk.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamoore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, that all items on the Consent Agenda minus item 2550 be accepted, placed on file, and recommendations carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mike Goangeli.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Before if we can, before we go to that, I know that the purpose for the scouts to be here is about their citizenship and government merit badge. So the Consent Agenda is items that are here that council may have discussed at previous work sessions or recommendations from the council. So some of that foundation information, think, well, how can they move along so fast and just pass things that way? The fact sheets that are in the city's website the clerk puts out and the staff prepares, kind of gives the detail to the information. But there is one item that was pulled for further discussion. So we'll listen to that item and the councilman's desire to pull for the reasons. So clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 2550, Veterans Park Playscape Replacement.
Councilman Mike Goangeli.
Your honor, I pulled this primarily just for community information. So the community knows that we are approving a contract in the amount of $74,931 to completely to purchase and install a brand-new playscape at Veterans Park, which is one of the more used heavily-used parks in the in our park system. So it was for information only, so the community knows what we're doing. So with that, Your Honor, I'll move to award purchase and installation of the playscape equipment at Veterans Park from Panchura LLC in the amount of $74,931.76.
Second. Motion by Councilman Mike Goangeli, supported by Councilman Lamoore on item 2550, the Veterans Park Playscape Replacement Contract. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mike Goangeli.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Items, Your Honor.
Next item is council comments. And Councilwoman Germaine, we're in October, here first.
So I've been getting questions from residents with regard to the four city charter updates that are on the ballot for November 5th. There is information on the city's website. And I'm going to refer to our city clerk for any further information and comment that she may have with regard to that.
Sure. So much like in 2015, when council placed other charter amendments on the ballot for consideration in November, we have used that template, and we've come up with it looks very similar to what we did in 2015. And what it is, is it essentially lists part of the charter items that are looking to be amended. And then, why change it now? It asks that question, and then there's some information. I want to be clear that this is not published by the clerk's office. The clerk can provide you with a copy of the complete charter sections, and we can give you a copy of the ballot. This is just an information guide. It doesn't urge voting one way or the other. It just gives information, factual information, that mirrors what was on the fact sheets when these items were put on voted by council to be put on the ballot back in July, back this past summer, June and July. So that's available online. I believe there's a link in the Facebook. There is also there are also copies of it in City Hall. So if you happen to be at City Hall, you can pick it up at any of the counters, except the clerk's counter. And then there's always a possibility, if you can't get to City Hall and you aren't capable, your capabilities are limited at home to get online, we can certainly mail you a copy. The city can do that. So that's what it is. It's a very simple guide, and that's probably the best way to get information. And again, the clerk's office, I do want to say this because we too got calls, and it wasn't our intent to frustrate anyone. We can only give you the ballot, like I said, a copy of the ballot and a copy of the charter amendments. This is this piece is really what you want to take a look at.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one other item. And Kailani Ray Rafco has moved her Gabby's ladder. It is now on North Monroe Street. And I want to congratulate her herself and her team for all the good work they do in grief counseling, and they deserve that brand-new building. So thank you. That's all.
Councilwoman Lamoore.
Yes, Your Honor. Want to welcome the Boy Scouts for being here, Boy Scouts Troop 547. As Councilman Mike Goangeli has a Eagle Scout, I have two in my family as well. All I want to do is encourage you to stick with it. It's well worth it, and it's helped my boys out in many ways. So stick with it. It's well worth it. That's it, Your Honor.
Councilman Felder.
All right. And following what Councilman Lamoore mentioned, I too am very supportive of young people being involved in politics. I'm sure you couldn't imagine. Apart from that, there are many community events going on right now. We are entering the busy season of the year. Just keep a lookout for those. Very happy to see the replacement of the park equipment over at Veterans and some of the other parks as we do these updates. I think I remember playing on some of that equipment myself when I was about my son's age, and now I'm taking him to many of the city parks. And he's playing on the same stuff that we were using. So we certainly got our money's worth. I'm happy that we're replacing them now. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman.
I have no remarks tonight.
Councilman Mike Goangeli.
First, I may have missed this, but have we recognized by proclamation the 200th anniversary of the first Presbyterian Church?
I'm only pausing because I know there was conversation, and I believe that was coming. I don't know that it's passed.
It's going on right now. I just, I couldn't recall if we did or not. I just wanted to ask.
I will follow up with Ms. Weaver, because I know that there was some conversation a short while ago about that. But I will follow up and get back to the council, as well as make sure that we do prepare a proclamation for a long history of a church establishment such as that. Thank you.
A question I have, and I guess it's going to involve at some point the city attorney. We, last couple of weeks, we had a situation where we had a shooting over on Fifth and Cass. And then several days later, with the police department doing an excellent job, they found the suspect over on Kentucky possessing quantities of drugs, assault weapon, and ammunition. Now, based on information that I received from the police chief, the city attorney did email me saying that his office has notified both property owners that they may be in violation of the nuisance law?
Your Honor, if I may, the communication did go to the owner of the property at 1122 East 6th, which is the location where the substances and drug paraphernalia were found. And so, under the ordinance, as the location where that was found, the notice was given to the owner of that property.
Okay. Now, the, just to refresh our memory, what's the process if we want to declare this a nuisance and have it closed?
So there's a two-step process as far as that goes, or two potentials, and the ordinance is in code section 296 of the city ordinances. And the letter that I sent falls under a provision that basically says that the property could be presumed to be a drug nuisance if this letter is sent and then another incident occurs within a period of time, and I believe that's a year. I don't have the ordinance right in front of me. I'd confirm that. But if a second incident were to occur at that property, then there's a persuasive presumption that exists under the ordinance, and city council could proceed under that presumption to have the property essentially padlocked or boarded up for up to one year. That does not necessarily preclude city council from deeming it a nuisance just based on the one incidence. But typically, our process has been to send this letter out, which notifies the property owner that there has been this type of incident, and that if another happens, there will be that presumption that would arise, that they are in fact having a drug nuisance situation, hopefully resulting in the property owner taking action themselves to deal with that scenario.
So the, I guess the question that I have, Mr. Budz was kind enough to send me that, is how aggressive does the city council want to be on drug-related properties? Do we want to issue a letter and then wait until there's another violation? Or once a violation occurs, do we want to start the process of closing the house down? I'm getting a little bit concerned that we're now seeing a connection between drugs and weapons. That's never been the case in Monroe. And based on what the, I asked the police chief, he said we've had five shootings this year alone. That is extremely unusual for Monroe. It is only a matter of time before we on council, and I never want to, I never want to be on council to get an email saying that we've had an injury in our police department. Okay? So I think we need to establish a policy about how aggressive we want to be with any property that's dealing in drug paraphernalia. My opinion is, we put it out there publicly. If someone's house is involved in a drug deal or drug paraphernalia, my thought is, we schedule a public hearing and we start the closure proceedings. I mean, Your Honor, I'm just throwing it out for council, because I think it's an important community issue that we have to start discussing.
I guess I'll start with a comment, just some thoughts of where a start point is, I think is, one, looking at what are the circumstances, felony versus misdemeanor. I think that's important to notice a criteria. I think there's some things that could be a misdemeanor violation that probably wouldn't rise to the level of, we'd start, you know, closing residences or activities. I think some of the activity that's there, is the person there, living there, or residing there, whether it be full-time, part-time. And that's another criteria. I think really looking at the criteria as a whole, because we know that sometimes there's people that visit, and actually, you know, the police are called, and then there's, you know, drugs that are seized. Is it because they're allowing it? Do they know? So there's some knowledge things there, I think, that would bring me along to how soon we do that. I know that the standard is, it currently is, is there's activity, police response, the reports are there, they go to the city attorney for review, they send the letter. I think it's currently felonies. But really, that dynamic of in the residents. Not that I want latitude for things to go on that's not acceptable, or are going to be tolerable by the residents of our community, but I think we have to kind of vet through that process. So maybe that's a start point. I like to, I don't have it all in front of me right now, what those are currently, but, and then, then I think we look at it and say, what's the last six months been where there's been, I'll say, drug contact seizures? And the combination of drugs and weapons definitely heightens that, no question, for me. So I think there's a little more information as we get forward. I think it's a good start to talk about it and see where we're at. And Mr. Pastu, I think you have something maybe we'll help clarify. I don't know.
If I may, Your Honor, thank you. Staff-wise, we've had the discussion. I can tell you that recently, the city attorney and Chief McCormick and I had a discussion regarding the chronic nuisance ordinance and laying out some considerations and, you know, help council formulate policy. I'm going to get to where the origin of our real problem is, some of these rental houses. Mr. Green has, you know, presented to me a reorganization plan that would focus on neighborhood improvements, that would look at certainly many of, you know, adapting the rental inspection program. We've had some discussion with enforcement with Mr. Budz's office and new staff that's come on board to deal with blight and rental violations. You know, I discussed the refuse assessment, and so, and then certainly the chronic nuisance. And so, given, you know, the busy work session we had tonight, I didn't put any of that on there. I will be here at the next meeting, but I think I'm comfortable enough between, you know, Mr. Budz, Chief McCormick, and Mr. Green putting together something, a dialogue for city council to just get right at this issue. It's not, it hasn't been unattended on our end.
No, I didn't want to.
No, and it implied, it's just.
Didn't want to imply that.
No, and I didn't take it as such either. But I do think that we're ready to the point to have a good discussion regarding, really, the core problem that we have with some of these issues, so.
I, Mr. Pastu, I'm sure as part of the discussion component is also, we talk about medical and the medical response and fire response, of items that can be added to that. I know that the police are first responders, but also the fires there, as well as MCA. When you start talking about those drugs that I will say are, again, rising to the felony level versus, I don't want to say just use, because that has an impact on, on not only the individuals, the, you know, those that live there, whether it be adults, children, whatever. So, but I just think, kind of compiling that information and then coming to a decision as a council to say what that tolerance is going to be. Is it something that's immediate? Is it something the second? What does that rise to? Is it, are they all felonies? Felony, then misdemeanors? I'm open to the discussion. I think that data helps us get there, but not to get grind into that to where we don't move forward. But I think there's some things that, as the staff, as the administration has started to say, I think things we can at least evaluate with all the information, so.
Great.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the items?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Vining?
Your Honor, I just wanted to acknowledge, this weekend, we attended the NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner. And so Monroe County's NAACP had been defunct for some period of time. And just wanted to acknowledge that that charter has restarted, and we had our first Freedom Fund Dinner this weekend. It was a good turnout, and it was titled "A New Beginning." So just wanted to acknowledge the new Monroe chapter of the NAACP.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You know, and I thought the article that was produced regarding that was informative, and I think it gives the community awareness of moving forward of what's going to be next steps. A couple items, I appreciate Councilwoman Jermaine bringing up the charter revisions on the ballot. I think that was well spoken to by her, as well as the clerk treasurer, as far as where to find the information. So as council's always said, you know, please take the time to look those over, read them, because be informed decision-makers is what's important when it comes time to looking at those charter revisions on the ballot. So the Recreation Director, where are the points here? I want to thank you for bringing forward that item on Veterans Park. It is one of, as councilman said, a park that's well-used and really marquee. So as we move forward in our parks plans, with all the hard work we have to do, if you haven't, if you weren't watching during the council work session, it was about parks and some tough decisions, but things that moving forward, how we move forward with those parks plans that we've prioritized. Last item I have, item that I have is there, the city Monroe, there will be a tree lighting this year. I know there's been some discussion about that. It's always a great activity event downtown at Lowering Square. The date's being set as Friday, November 22nd, 2019, of course, at 7:00 PM will be the tree lighting. But there'll be some activities, and starting at 5:30 through 7:30. The committee formed, one of the members of the DDA, Clerk Chair Lavoy, myself, and a couple others, and that's kind of starting to grow with some participation. So there will be, I guess, more formal announcement, flyer and information for council, but also the residents. But at least wanted to get a date out there, that on Friday, November 22nd, it will be the tree lighting downtown in Lowering Square. And it's always a great time, a lot of fun. And so, again, some of the support that we receive from businesses downtown will be open, and I look forward to expanding that this year with some activities as well. Councilman?
Your Honor, I forgot to comment. I see some of the fire personnels in the audience. Just wondered, Scott, how did the open house go?
Yeah.
Very well. We estimated about between 700 and 800.
Seven to 800?
That's what we estimate, yes.
Nice. Very good.
Yeah, it was this past weekend, and I know that there's some residents who were able to make that talk to me, and some that unfortunately were out of town or missed it. But I know there'll be other opportunities as we get through, especially the holiday season, opportunities to, for the community to see the facility, but also, you know, as we, as we talked about that in the community room, and opportunities to expand and use that in the future as well. Yes, oh, gets a couple more. Go ahead. Councilman Vining?
Speaking of the tree lighting?
Yeah.
Have you heard anything yet? Are we going to have another winter Wonderland Parade in downtown Monroe?
That's been the most, the second most frequent question I've had in the past week besides the tree lighting, and the answer is yes. I received a phone call today. The Monroe news, I understand, is hosting. I don't have the details. I don't have the date and time. There was a late phone call that came in that I need to call back tomorrow to get some more of the information. We'll make sure that gets, that gets to council as well as gets publicized. We're not the ones going to be publicizing it. Of course, it'll be the sponsors of that, but we'll make sure we partner with that through our communications director, to put it on our webpage and Facebook and other things. And I know the clerk treasurer and I chatted about that at the meeting as well. But there will be, the details are yet to come, and I'm sure we'll have enough to present at our next council meeting, if not before. Thanks, good question. Councilwoman Jermaine?
This is for the fire department as well. If someone wants to tour the new station, and they couldn't go to your open house, how would they do that? Who would they contact?
They can contact any officer at the station.
Call the number, stop in?
Yes, the number 734-241-1626.
Thank you.
Very good. Clerk Chair Lavoy?
I just have a couple of comments, Your Honor. I neglected to say that this, this form is not something that my office came up with or anything. This was from Director of Communications, Jody Egan.
Correct.
And she does a really great job with helping my office and other departments get the word out about issues like that. So just wanted to give credit where credit was due.
Thank you.
The other item I wanted to talk about was absentee ballots. Really quickly, if you think that you've applied for one and haven't received one, or if you want to apply for one, please make sure you contact the office. They are out, so you should have received your absentee ballot, and we'll get an application to you or help you make arrangements to receive one. The, there has been some misunderstanding that because of the law, the laws that have been passed regarding elections, that you no longer have to fill out an application, or you only have to fill out one application, and then you never have to fill one out again. That's not true. Michigan is still a state that requires an application to be on file in my office for each ballot that we distribute. So you do have to fill out an absentee application. And if you haven't gotten your ballot, call my office, 734-384-9140, and we'll help you out with that. For those of you who may not have been tuned in during the Election Commission, Councilperson Felder brought up a good point. There have been a lot of changes with election law, although there really are just a handful that actually are on the front side of things and would indirectly affect the voting public. We have been working on trying to educate, and again, I'm working with Jody Egan to come up with some ways. We'll continue to educate and continue to ramp that up as more voters come online with the 2020 election. We want to make sure, and it's a constant reeducation, because obviously, people ebb and flow into the election process. So we will, I know I've had a couple of council people ask me about that, and again, Andrew asked about that earlier, and we continue to do that. And I think you'll see more education also coming from outside organizations as well. So that's, oh, and finally, just on behalf of the Board of the United Way, I'm a member, and we really appreciate the continued support of the city, not just of the council, but of all the residents and all of the employees here at City Hall. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, Councilman Administration?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two items. One is, at the next meeting, I'm going to ask council to consider the schedule for the Monday, November 4th meeting, the day before the election. In particular, is canceling the 6:00 PM work session I've never been a big fan of. I don't find it very productive. And then also, you know, with the clerk being pretty much up for 24 hours, I just assumed have the clerk move on and be ready for the next busy day. The other part of it is, the second part would be to schedule the regular meeting for that 6 o'clock. I anticipate it'll be a fairly light agenda, but we have some business to conduct, but to get in, get out, and then, so unless I'm hearing, and you've got time to let me know your thoughts, but unless there's any kind of negative feedback from it, I would put a resolution out there to city council at the next meeting for you to consider.
So with that, with the clerk treasurer making sure if the regular meeting is at 6, which we hold work sessions, so it's not that we don't ever meet at 6, it would be the regular meeting, make sure there's appropriate notification, a timeline that we get those posted. And I know together, administration and clerk will make sure that gets done. So I'm looking to council if there's any thoughts with that.
We need to do a formal motion here?
We do have to do a resolution.
You have to do a resolution.
Yeah, yeah, we've done this one other time, and we've got a very, very structured city charter that.
So that will come back in the next meeting in a form of resolution. I don't see any objections, so we'll look forward to that at the next meeting for us to, for consideration for the November 4th meeting.
Thank you. The other item is, I asked city attorney Matt Budz to give us a litigation update. We can, are comfortable on a couple items to go public with, so, Mr. Budz?
So, Your Honor and council, I'm pleased to report that several items that were previously things that were discussed in closed sessions pending litigation are no longer as such at this point. You'll recall a long list of cases that were under the heading of mixed harms, a number of cases that we've referred to several times throughout updates. I am able to report that the District Court in Detroit has taken action as far as those matters are concerned, and did in fact render a judgment dismissing all of those claims against all the various defendants. That was dated as of September 30th of 2019. The other matter that I can report on is the Arnett Jackson matter. That was a District Court matter. Just to let you know that that has been brought to a conclusion as well with the claims against the city and the police department dismissed by the local district court here, First District Court in Monroe. And that order has gone final in that case as well. And then a last, and I won't go into too much detail on this because this remains pending, but this is a publicly available document that the magistrate in the Stacy Hall matter against the city of Monroe has recommended that the District Court judge and the federal district court in Detroit grant the city's motion and dismiss those claims as well. So there's a period of time for objections to that recommendation to be filed before the district judge will take action. And that's an update on the district judge will take action, and that's an update on three matters of litigation at this point in time. Three for three.
Mr. Pastu, anything further?
Nothing else, your honor.
This time, citizens' comments. Any other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments from those present. Seeing none, we do have a closed session that we need motion to move forward.
Your honor, I move that we go into closed session for purpose of land acquisition and pending litigation update on 14 East First LLC.
Second. Motion by Council Mike Langely, supported by Councilman Lamore. To go into closed executive session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Egwangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?